There you go. At this time I'd like to call the public session to order. I do need to make a motion though to exit executive session for that. Is there a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
It moves in seconded. All those in favor, please say hi. I pose abstaining, motion carries. All right, please stand for the saying of Pledge of Allegiance said by our student representative, Marissa Zercon.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good. Thank you. All right, I'll move over to the budget, Director Budget Presentations, and we're going to begin with Mr. Hazel.
If I could just really quick, Mr. Sable?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, and I want to preface this with all the directors and everybody who's going to be speaking tonight. Our leadership group this year has just done an outstanding job, given the circumstances that our district's under, and I know that they don't get to be before you very often, but I want to make sure that I note that, and because it's Mr. Hazel and Ms. Smith up first, I just want to say what an incredible job I believe they've done with the technology and learning aspect. When it comes to getting devices to kids, making sure the continuity of learning has been just that, that it's had continuity, they've done an incredible job, both of them. So thank you and the rest of the directors. Thanks for all of your work this year. It's really been important for all of our families and it's, I think, a model for what we've seen out there. So great job.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, I see it up there, Ryan. Thank you. Hey, Ryan, I'll just, I'll just say next slide when I need next slide, okay? Okay, let's start with next slide. Right, so there's going to be three items on this, on this slide here. We're going to start with Technology Sustainability. You know, let's start with Chromebooks. It's hard to overstate the role that these Chromebooks have played in the successful implementation of this continuity of learning plan. Next to all the people, of course, getting a Chromebook in the hands of all these kiddos who need the one has really, well, it's helped propel the learning, continue, continue the good work that we're doing. Let's talk a bit about Chromebooks here. In 2019, 2020, so this past school year, we did have an inventory of approximately 2,000 Chromebooks. That allowed us to be one-to-one for grades four through eight with the balance distributed at the other grades K through three and nine through 12. Chromebooks are usually typically approximately half the cost of a typical Windows-based laptop that is comparable. The Google maintenance on those will last about five years or licensed for five years for Google security updates. Because that inventory was purchased over a relatively shorter amount of time, most will need to be taken out of service prior to the start of September 2022. This school year, we purchased an additional 650 as a quick infusion due to COVID and the continuity of learning plan that required all the secondary students in need to have access and all the elementary virtual students as well. This spring or summer, we are planning to purchase an additional 650 again because of COVID continuity of learning. The demand was much greater than we originally anticipated. Further out prior to September 2022, if we wish to maintain the pre-COVID inventory, then we're going to need to purchase a final approximately 800 to maintain that inventory to replace what will be taken offline. Ultimately, it is our conservative intention to maintain the pre-COVID inventory and sustain that over time before we go seeking to branch out too much more, but I'll get to that part. Other classroom technology is your projectors, your document, your webcams, computers, things of that sort. We're going to continue to stretch the lifespan of these things as much as possible, as long as possible, using New York State AID funds where needed and where appropriate. The long term is sustainability. The long term is trying to ensure that based on the prior inventory that we can maintain the approximately 2,000 Chromebooks, about 200 projectors in classrooms, approximately 250 classroom computers, 250 document cameras or slash webcams. Maintaining the existing inventory equates out to approximately $250,000 a year, and that is a number that Allison and I have been working, talking about back and forth. There's naturally going to be fluctuation in that because sometime, like I said, there was a a larger purchase of Chromebooks in a shorter amount of time, but over time, if the idea is to have a total replacement cost for current instructional technology, that's, that's what we're looking at, which is why we are excited when we heard about the idea of the proposition for a capital reserve fund for technology for the long run. That's very exciting, and that's the first step in long-term sustainability of the hardware program, the instructional hardware program over time. Hey, Ryan, next slide. Computer-assisted instruction, this is the more traditional technology budget, so to speak. This is your New York State AIDable Hardware Software Funds. This is what we have used for classroom instructional technology purchasing, whether it was projectors or computers. This is how we pay for K through 12 software, so everything from, from elementary science software at times or secondary math software. There's an ESL software, for example. This is also how we pay for repairs and maintenance for phones and PA systems. I anticipate that should decrease over time though because we have replaced or are replacing a substantial amount of the PA systems and my gosh, I think all of the phones. So it might kind of transition simply into some basic maintenance. Anyhow, on this slide, no increase to this item at all for this year. Hey, Ryan, thank you. Curriculum Development Supervision 2010 codes, as I call them. These are traditionally our resources for internal PD in literacy and mathematics instruction. This is all, this is typically what Jen Glass would be doing with elementary teachers. This year, of course, Jen has been leading the elementary virtual program. There hasn't been as much of a focus on this piece here. We are, however, continuing with our new teacher programming, which is certainly a highlight of every month. Jen and I get to have an hour-long meeting with our newest teachers. We've been going through a growth mindset book. We get to talk about how things are going, how they might implement growth mindset, model growth mindset in their classrooms. That's definitely a nice thing that we do with this fund here, but no, no increase to this fund here. Next slide, Ryan. In-service training and instruction. In the past, this has been used for a wide variety of professional development, and I've actually kept it on there just so that you can see what we've done in the past with this fund and what we anticipate and look forward to doing again in the future. But for this past year, I'll draw your attention to Summer Instructional Google Institutes. Part of that, part of the success of the continuity of learning plan is that we were able to get the teachers up to speed with how to use Google Classroom in their classes virtually and in person effectively for student engagement. That happened, I think that we found that we were successful because of the training that they did over the summer and over the first half of the school year, and some funding came from this fund for that purpose. No increase to this piece here, Ryan. BOSI Services, you're aware of how many services we subscribe to participate in from BOSI's. Everything from elementary PBIS, which we're continuing this year, but we're actually decreasing a little bit, which accounts for some of that decrease. Library Automation Systems, there's no increase or decrease here, simply an acknowledgement. We use BOSI Support for Library Automation. Secondary Standards and Data-Driven Instruction PD, and of course, the Classroom Technology Integration, which is the top item. Website platform, though, is on here as well, just as a reminder that the new website and its communication features are actually a BOSI service. And that kind of rounds that out. At the end of the day, we are seeing a $25,000 decrease in BOSI's services. We're going to be reorganizing how certain data systems work, and I think that we're going to be able to actually see a pretty substantial decrease there, which is very good news. Last slide here, summary. So there's three points to this. There's the tech sustainability piece, that's the long-term piece. And I think the takeaway on that piece is we are seeking to maintain the inventory of classroom instructional technology. Once we feel as if that's set, once we feel as we can see the horizon and say, okay, we can maintain what we have for the years to come based on the lifespan of each type of device. I think that's a good, that's where we start, and that's where we're at right now. Curriculum Development In-service Training and the other components of technology, no increase to that. And of course, the BOSI Services, like I mentioned, we're dialing back a little bit on some data services, and we're going to try to reconfigure how some of that is done. I suppose the takeaway from all this, though, and I understand it is a, it's a budget presentation, we're talking about money, but I was, I was reflecting on this today on the drive home about how with respect to this, how amazing it's been to work with such a talented and dedicated group of people for a common purpose aligned with our mission, which is to educate children. We've had an opportunity to do this. We've had, we've had a need to collaborate on this. And although I'm sure we all hope for a return to something that's slightly somewhat more familiar in the year ahead, I can't tell you how evident it is that this work has strengthened our team. It has made me feel as this is such an honor to be able to work with them. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Can I just add one quick thing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Actually, it'll be two. One, I saw that and I didn't see initially Jen Goliath is on here as well. And for those, I think most of you know, Jen is our teacher on special assignment who handles so much of the professional development for a particular elementary program, but not just elementary. And this year, I guess I couldn't imagine a remote elementary program that didn't have Jen Goliath attached to it. Her ability to work through all of the bugs, you know, the issues that would come up, that still come up. We really have been incredibly fortunate to have been able to utilize her in that role. So Jen's done an incredible job for us, too.
Yes.
And second, one thing I want the board to understand is that one of the things that's not part of Jeff's budget is the staffing for certified employees, first of all, teachers. So, so you understand, we are entering, and I know we talked about this, but we're, we are planning worst-case scenario for next year, which is on the, on the staffing side for teachers, similar to what we have to do now. Right? So anything that's better than that will fit, will be better for us budget-wise, right? But we need to be able to plan and our expenditure budget with the idea in mind that we may still need to be provide, need to provide remote learning and that sort of thing because we just don't know. Changes come quick, they come fast, they come unexpected, so we just need to be ready.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Hazel? Members of the board? All right then, Mr. Hazel, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Sellers?
Hello, good evening. Hope everyone's good today. So I'm just waiting until my presentation comes up. All right. All right, so I'm just going to start, same as I did last year, just want to tell you about the students that we support. We support the students with special needs, age three through 21 in our school. Students who are supported under Section 504 and students who are supported through English as a new language. So those are three areas. Okay, so where are our students? So 60% of our students are supported in the general ed setting, 25 are in specialized, in our buildings, in the school, and 30% of students are supported in any specialized setting outside of our schools. So I just wanted to show the difference between last year and this year. Pretty much within our budget, there haven't been a lot of changes. We just had some additional funds added to our CSE legal expenses, and then everything else is the same, and then there were some just movements within the budget. So this is what our budget looks like, and then I'm going to go to the next slide and just kind of explain, you know, what we moved. So I, we did some.
I'm sorry, just one quick. Could everybody just mute themselves if they're not talking? Because there's a little bit of feedback coming from, I think, one of, one of the people. Thank you.
All right, so some of the things that we did, we decided to move within our budget, but it did not increase the totals. So one of the areas that we decreased was the travel and conference areas because we've been able to really do some internal staff development, and we haven't had a lot of opportunities to travel and participate in conferences outside. And I think it's going well, and we're able to really meet the needs in that way, so we decreased it for the upcoming year. And then we added some additional funds to our office supplies just to, so we could replenish anything that's out of date. For example, a shredder for our office and various items that we may need to. We've been doing a lot more mailings, so there might be some areas that we need to replenish there. We've sent home progress reports. We sent home during this last school year, a lot of packets instead of having the students get them for themselves. So we've been able to do a lot of printings in our office and send those out. So there's just little items that we need to, we need to replenish. So for the budget increase, we added $25,000 into legal costs. Just because with the pandemic, we're not sure how things are going to go once the school year, you know, once we get kids back into the school year. However, I just would like to mention, and I would like to kind of brag at our department, you know, since I started, since Dr. Metzger and I started in December and January last year, we came into the district and handled approximately four due process hearings, and since then, in the new school year, there have been none. And so we really feel that our proactive approach and our collaboration and communication with parents help, will help decrease any future issues. So that's one thing I would like to say that we, I'm very proud of. We really have been able to handle issues as they come, so they don't get to a point where that relationship is possibly fractured between the parents and the school and move forward. And then we have a little bit every year, I'd like to address just the points that we're going to target in our staff development. We want to work with specific teachers regarding classroom management. We've noticed that there's some specific behaviors that have come forward, and we want to just get some training in for our teachers, and we're going to start that on the Staff Development Day. And then also, we want to work with the classroom aides and provide training with them to work in the classroom setting. So those are two things that we want to look at this year in addition to any other trainings that we provide. And I think that's it.
I just want to add one more thing, just so everybody's aware. The budgeted dollars that Mary went over did not include BOSI's numbers, so there's probably, I'm still working on that budget right now. There's probably a couple million more in special programs dollars that are spent in that area.
And, and a lot of that is the cost of living increases for BOSI's every year, so. Any questions?
Any questions by board members? Very good, thank you. All right, moving on to our next presenter, Mr. Phillips.
Hello, everybody, and I apologize for the dark Zoom. I don't think I've zoomed at night before in this office, and I think I got to do some front lighting. So we can go to the next slide for the proposed budget of 2122. Our staff consists of 53 people on the ONM side with one director of facilities, one head custodian that's district-wide, four maintenance people, five district-wide labors, six building labors, I have 33 full-time cleaners, two part-time cleaners, and a mail courier. For this upcoming budget, we have reached 10 years in age of some of our vehicles in our fleet and are up for replacement, which can help to ensure that we do not have costly repairs or breakdowns when they are needed the most. This obviously is critical during the winter for snow plowing and keeping our schools open. We've got these vehicles now on this cycle, and we have some coming up for replacement that are that are due, and we've had a couple that have cost us dearly this winter that have been down and presented some problems. Next slide, please. If you look at the chart here, you can see everything listed in red is up for over 10 years in age and scheduled for replacement. The ones in green are in good shape, and yellow will be coming in the next few years. If we go to the next slide, we'd be looking to purchase an F-450 dump truck with a V-plow for approximately cost $72,000, which will replace one of our salt trucks, which is one of the ones that gave us a lot of problems this winter and is essential for keeping our school salted, especially with multiple locations that they have to get to, you know, with the district being so spread out between six buildings. We'd be looking for two other work trucks that would be F-250, regular cab eight-foot box with the plows and a Chevy full-size van to replace the one that's needed for food services for a cost of $202,500. Then we have our annual maintenance contractual fee increases for Simmons for the HVAC controls in the district of $4,462 and Sonatrol for monitoring fees and upgrades to the platforms at the high school and middle school for the lockdown devices that we installed of $5,000 for that total of $9,462. The, obviously, crazy year with COVID has left us with some challenges, and we are in very good shape with all our PPE and equipment, but things come up all the time. So I've asked that we could do $20,000 extra for supplies and $10,000 for equipment that would be for replacing sprayers, buying more gloves, buying more masks, whatever might be needed around the district. And obviously, this upcoming budget has presented us with some large expenses in vehicles and in the COVID-19 area, but these items are essential for our everyday duties, you know, to help the district run day in and day out. And our goal is to provide a safe and clean, efficient environment for our staff, students, and members of the public who utilize our facilities here at the Niagara Wheatfield School District. I don't know if anybody has any questions?
Yeah, I'd like, Allison. Can you hear me, Allison?
Yes.
On his proposed budget, we're not going to have no issues giving him the equipment he needs, are we?
I'm actually putting together, and I think we discussed it at a couple other of the previous board meetings, and putting together resolutions for the board to approve at the next meeting for propositions on the budget vote to utilize capital transportation reserves to fund those purchases. So yes, we, I'm planning on putting them in the budget, and as long as the public passes them, we can certainly buy those vehicles.
Now, as far as the reserves, do we do what, what, what Mr. Phillips needs, like we're going to be doing with technology and the buses? Where we can, it's always easier to just budget things for a long term. Is that what we'll be doing for his equipment down the road?
Yes, he's got a plan set forth on when those equipment pieces need replacement, so there's a schedule in place. It just so happens this year, there's a majority of them that are coming up all at once. So we are able to utilize our transportation capital reserve monies to, for facilities vehicles. So yes, that's part of the replacement plan.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to add as well that the, where else, I'm also going to ask the board if they would want to put on a new capital transportation reserve, which would be voted on at the May vote as well.
For, for Greg's equipment or for the buses?
It would be for everything, all kinds of transportation equipment. It doesn't matter if it's facilities or the buses. Actually, I'm going to be going through the reserves, and I'll talk a little bit about that later tonight, but.
Okay. Well, thank you for the information. Greg, one question. Now, I know not, maybe now is not the time to ask things like this because the unforeseen economic dilemma that we're in. But as far as workforce, under normal conditions, and we weren't under so tight budgets, how is your workforce? Is there another area where you may need someone, maybe down the road or presently?
So to answer that, Richard, to be honest with you, I, I've really wanted to sit down and tackle the square footage per person here and their areas and, you know, the effectiveness of how the cleaning's going, you know, how my staff's covering preventative maintenance, how we're tackling the everyday building duties, and with this COVID this year, I have not sat down and broke it down, but it is on my hit list for the very near future.
Okay, okay, so everything's going pretty smooth, it's considering right now?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Greg.
Thank you.
Any other questions by board members? All right, thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
All right, Leslie. You're up.
Good evening. I'm Leslie Bukowski from the Transportation Department. You've got to go the the beginning would be our, my transportation budget. These are a picture of one of our, a set of our vans. Okay, you can go to the next one. Fleet Maintenance Replacement, 2011 Revised Board Policy, the 5751 states replacing buses at 200,000 miles or 15 years. Presently, we are purchasing eight new buses per year to maintain the fleet. Next. Transportation and Maintenance. Our current maintenance schedule includes 69 buses, one shop truck, as well as nine vehicles for the buildings and grounds, one food service vehicle. Our mechanics provide minor maintenance with a three-month and a six-month routine checklist. The school bus DOT profile is 98.7 out of 100%, and this has been updated as of March 31st, 2020. And March 31st of this year, we will get a new one. At this point, transportation staff, we have drivers in attendance. We have 42 drivers, which include permanent unassigned drivers. We're down from last year by 15. We have 18 attendants down by two. Bus garage staff, we have four mechanics, one head bus driver, two office clerks. Bus garage staff, we have four mechanics, one head bus driver, two office clerical staff, one school bus fleet coordinator, one director of transportation. Note, out of the nine bus garage staff, seven drive regularly. Red days, we have 43. The schools go by red days and black days. I'm sure you're aware of that. The red days, we have 43 routes times two per AM and 49 routes times two in the PM. On black days, we have 41 times two in the AM and 47 times two in the PM. We are in need of drivers using all subs in the district and thanks to Greg, including the buildings and grounds employees. We continue to recruit and maintain safe, quality drivers and attendant monitors. Budget review. There are no increases. My contractuals include the snow plowing camera maintenance contracts, which is done three times a year where they check the cameras, chronos payroll, uniforms, two way radios in the buses, EZ Pass for the bridges and the throughway, insurance, the ER equipment repair operations and transfer transportation fleet, safety and drug testing, which is also done four times a year. Contractual expenses, bus garage, gas, heat, telephone, electric and rentals. Thank you for your safety and the support of our children. Please stay safe. Any questions?
One question, if if someone wanted to drive bus, he would he or she would still have to get the learner's permit on his or her own. And then would we are we still training if we need to?
Yes, we do train.
And we and go through the test to help them along?
Yes, we train them so they are able to pass the road test. And then fingerprint them afterwards federally.
Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Leslie. All right, moving on to Dominic.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, presenting the Niagara Wheatfield 2122 food service budget. As most of you are aware, salary and fringe benefits for the coming school year, salary and fringe benefits are contractual increases that are built into our food service budget. Equipment replacement. I want to take a moment and truly thank the Board of Education for having approved the purchase of five brand new walking coolers and walk-in freezers for the high school, middle school, Colonial Village, West Street and Eric Road. Thank you once again. Truly appreciate it. Under our program expenses for the current year and for the budget for 2122 in food, I propose that we keep the budget the same, projecting for supplies at 30,000 as well. Vending machine purchases remain the same and government commodities the same this year and projected for next year. As for new equipment, we are budgeting 50,000 for the coming school year, 10,000 for equipment repair, 25,000 for contract contractual bank services, 3,000 for conferences and $2,430 for the uniform allowance for my cooks and food service helpers. Coin?
That's all I got. Did you have more?
That was short. I apologize, but I would like to share with the board that it's been an unprecedented year. It's been a very difficult year for my program, which took a hit. In one aspect, I'd like to share that all students were eligible for free breakfast and lunch. But with that being said, our participation district wide overall went down and went down a pretty good number. And my staff and I have worked tirelessly to try to come up with some kind of solutions, some kind of answers for the COVID impact that we've had, whether we are providing meals daily for parent pickup in the parking lot of the high school on asynchronous days. With the help of Leslie and transportation, we're providing meals that the buses are delivering for us. It's been it's been a work in progress.
Just a question for me, this is for superintendent on that one. I know this has been brought up before, but how's Dominic's budget affected endemic maybe finances? How is it affected by the reimbursements right now from the federal government with with our breakfasts? Is that because I know you said there's a lot less kids taking it? Is that is are they going by the number of lunches that we actually create? Or the number of lunches and breakfasts that kids take? Because obviously, we might be making more not knowing exactly how many kids are going to take them each day.
Our reimbursement is based on the amount of breakfast and reimbursable breakfast and lunches that are served.
Right. And how is how has been the government right now in reimbursing us? Is that still being tied up or?
It is. It's been a slower process this year for the reimbursement. Sometimes we go weeks, if not months, waiting on that reimbursement, but I believe slowly starting to catch itself up. I know on our end, we've been submitting on time as we've always done. But there's been sometimes a little bit of a delay as far as waiting for that reimbursement to come back to our program.
Okay. All right.
Actually, Dominic, just a quick question. When they reimburse, I don't know, dollar wise, percentage wise, is that mainly for the actual food cost or is that including overhead? You know, cooks?
That's above and beyond the cost of the food. It's a dollar amount and it falls under the exception of this year. Previous years, it was a different amount that you were reimbursed, whether the student was paid, reduced or free. Paid, you got the least reimbursement, reduced, you got a little bit more. And if a child was eligible for free meal, he or she got, we got the largest reimbursement for that eligibility.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, Don, not only you, I mean, I want to thank yourself, all your staff, Greg and his staff, Mr. Hazel. I mean, especially you and Greg, we're dealing with the students, the schools under these unprecedented times and all of yours. I mean, you know, Mr. Stack has done a wonderful job with Dan to really, we've had a pretty smooth year considering everything that everyone and has been through. So a shout out to all yous with all your staff.
Thank you, Mr. Sirianni. I'd like to thank everybody personally, myself, that going from a Friday to a Monday mentality with this COVID that nobody ever encountered before and how were we going to do it? We had to reconfigure our serving lines. We had a social distance. Everyone had to wear masks. Everything took a longer time. Students could no longer help themselves on the lunch line. We had to serve them everything that they chose that they wanted on their breakfast or lunch tray. But I would like to share our superintendent, Dan Lalanich, hats off. How many times was he in our kitchen helping bag these meals? Whether it was for the buses or the parent pickup, how much how nice it was to see that, to see that teamwork start from the top and trickle down. I've never seen that before, and I'm not just saying that because we're, you know, in a Zoom meeting at a board meeting. I just truly want to thank him and I've told him in person. Everybody, Matt McKenna, Tom Stack, the whole crew, everybody that we see has truly helped figure this one out. And at least, God forbid, I hope we don't go through this next year, but if we do, at least we're prepared and have a better understanding of what we'll be dealing with in the coming school year. But thank you to everybody. I truly appreciate it. I could not have done it without the support of Niagara Wheatfield School District employees.
You know, and I agree, Mr. McKenna, with all the changes and everything that's going on in sports, and I don't want to leave out Leslie with all the bus and schedules and God only knows what's going on there. Their department knows more than what's going on than anybody. I want to thank yous all.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions then? For Dominic? All right, then. Mr. McKenna, you're up.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me here today. We're going to discuss our 202122 budget. To the next slide. Again, just the start here, the budget request for 202122 year reflect the existing department codes normally submitted. And these requests combine all levels, varsity, JV modified. And unfortunately, last year, we didn't have the opportunity to start our unified sports because of the shutdown, but we will be giving that another try this spring. And that representing our 63 athletic teams in our sports Hall of Fame. So the first budget line there you can see is athletic equipment or athletic equipment code. There's in each of the slides, you'll see the what we have done last year, again, 2020 to 2021 to 2122, and the difference and no change there. And again, the purchases in in this code are for larger items, not supply items such as soccer goals, baseball, nettings, softball pitching machines. Those are just examples. And again, we were fortunate enough to get the beautiful facility right outside my office here. So we were fortunate that they have to purchase many big ticket items that in the past that when they had a little bit of breakdown, would have to be replaced. So, you know, that certainly was nice. But on the other hand, we looked at, you know, new items that we have never even anticipated have to do such as cameras for live streaming our sports events that will be in this code as well as in a code that I'll talk about here in a minute for you know, our huddle program that helps us live stream all our events and that is a BOC's eligible product, which is in our contractual. But I'll speak about that in a moment. Next slide. Speaking of that contractual code for 10, 155,000 last year and as well as the same this year. And again, specific vendors or agencies, examples are sports officials, our reconditioning, our trainer contract, et cetera, et cetera. That's what's, you can imagine it's one of our larger codes for all the items that we have to purchase in that line. Sort of supplies has always been similar. Now you can see in there the chlorosticks, disinfectant wipes, everything that disinfects. I imagine that that is, you know, would be a little larger under the circumstances, but it's really been a team effort with ourself and Greg's group being able to support us with some of the items that we needed in an amazing, quick fashion and what we've learned in the last six months, something can happen one day and the next day we need that stuff. Again, disinfectant wipes, you know, solution to wipe down equipment and the ever changing protocols that we have to follow and need one thing for one day and then we needed the next thing. Greg Phillips and his group has been just amazing and helping us out there. But I felt in this line, it was still adequate and there was room to even delve into supplies if needed. Which brings me to the next slide, which is inner scholastic supplies for 5-0. And that is 2021's 43,000. You can see the reduction there, but in the next slide, we'll show you the just another side to the budget here that we'll kind of we'll look at that. If you just go back, Ryan, though, in a minute. And these supplies again, you know, the smaller ticketed items that we need on an annual basis, such as our basketballs, batting helmets, awards, you know, those types of items, they're not in that equipment line that you know, we still need on an annual basis. But you can go to the next slide, Ryan. And as you can see there, the one thing that we were unfortunately not able to get last year was one of the things that we said we'll put aside for in the following year because of the COVID-19 issues that we've had is the uniforms. And again, the one thing as we're seeing as I go through the inventory of our uniforms, you know, we have some varsity in uniforms that haven't been replaced in over eight years, which is a long time, but it becomes even more cumbersome because most, not all vendors, if there is an issue with the actual uniform, they're unreplaceable. So that in combination with our modified uniforms being over five or six years old, because we've had it that long already. We're seeing a lot of wear and tear on those as well. Because in some situations, we do use those uniforms for multiple sports. We have a kind of like a unified pair of lacrosse shorts that we can use for modified soccer, for girls, soccer, girls, across. You know, so we wanted to take some money out to refurbish and replace some of those items, some of those uniforms. And this item here, I believe it has changed the wall of fame. Last year's 8,000, it says 3,000 here, but I believe it might be 8,000. But here and there, this is an item that is true and near to many of our hearts. And I know it's it's been just a tremendous experience for myself as well as I think the community, when we talk about community engagement is one of our, you know, our true goals. It's been spectacular and unfortunately, again, like anything this past year, we were not able to have our awesome ceremony that we have for the last several years, couple of years here. But we look to hopefully be able to, knock on wood, do this again in person in the upcoming year. So wall of fame, four, five, one, a budget line there. So in total, you can see the difference. It would probably be very close to 2,226 if we would add the 5,000 on to that budget line for the wall of fame. But I think that'll be discussed and determined down the road. So those are the grand totals for our athletic program. And again, I'd echo everybody's sentiments that have spoke already on behalf, you know, of our athletic department. And as we know, as every department, things were constantly changing within what probably pretty close here to 365 days and we've had to make changes so quickly and make sure they were correct, make sure they're accurate, make sure they're right and make sure it's the best for our community. And being a part of Section 6 in the Niagara Frontier League, it hasn't been always the case in other districts. And I certainly believe that we've done a tremendous job. And like everybody has said, it's what we're doing is a team effort. And whatever is happening, you know, I think it's it's pretty successful in the team that we have developed and Dan has developed under him to make this all come together and it was certainly evident in this past year. Any questions?
Any questions from any board members?
Ryan, could you do me a favor and just bring everybody up on the screen together for a minute, please? Is that possible?
What do you mean? Are you not seeing gallery view?
No, I'm only seeing, is it just me?
Yeah.
I see everybody.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Because what I want to say is this. The the faces that you see on the screen and I'll absolutely include our board of this. It's been from the start of COVID, it's been a can do. Right? We face problems together, we problem solve, we don't focus on the problem itself, just the solution. And you know, the faces and the people that you heard presenting tonight helped. So much with the leadership and making that happen. You know. I work very closely, of course, with Allison and Tom and Jeff, but the rest of the group, I mean, just watching how they've handled. What could be a woe is me, I don't know how we're going to do this. It was never that, not for one of the these people. And you know, I want more in the school community just to know. You know, how incredible that is. And I think it has a lot to do with how we've been able to work through this together. So you know, I want to say thank you for all the work they've all done. It's really been, believe it or not, a joy to work through. These really difficult problems with people who care about kids and just want to do what's best for them. Yeah.
Thank you, everyone. All right then. Moving on with our consistent agenda items. Like the call for motion to accept the consensus agenda items as submitted.
Move it.
Within seconded, all those in favor, please say aye. Poser staying. Motion carries. Call for motion to accept the personnel report as submitted.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Moving seconded, any item to separate to discuss. If not, then all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Poser abstaining. Motion carries. All right, capital project committee.
Yeah, as the capital project, we had a meeting tonight with Batman Turner. I guess they're doing a fine job for us. What we talked about today was the, actually the additional money that was saved from the prior capital projects. And we went over about eight different items. That we're looking at to get a cost on and see what we can add to the capital project list. Because of the savings that we encountered in the prior projects. We did come up with one that we're pretty much gonna, we agreed on that needs to go forward. But there's about, I'd say about six other items that we're waiting for dollar numbers to determine which ones we want to actually go forward with. But it was a very good meeting. They're doing a fine job for us.
Any questions about for Bob on the capital project report? All right then. Personnel, policy committee. Would you like to read your first readings?
Not particularly. But I do, but I do have one thing I have to say. There are some to be read tonight, but we do have. A few that we still had to revisit, so we're going to meet, I think I saw, which I didn't get a chance to respond to yet, but next week. To just kind of finalize the few that we had some questions and. Other things to discuss, so there will be more.
Okay. All right then, this is coming from a standing committee who do not need to have a motion or a second for it. But we are going to be voting tonight on the first reading of the filing policies, policy thirteen thirty, the appointments and designations by the board. Sixteen twenty, which deals with the annual organization meeting. Five fifty-six eighty-one, school safety plans meeting or policy. Policy sixty-four eleven, the use of email in the district. Policy seventy-four twenty, sports in the athletic program and policy thirty-four twenty non-discriminate issue and anti-arrestment in districts. Any other questions about any of those individual policies or if you'd like Julie to present and talk about each individual policy, you can ask her to.
We don't have enough time for that.
All right then, all those in favor of accepting the first reading of those policies, please say aye.
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 Poser abstaining. Motion carries. All right. We have, it's the internal claims auditors report. As informational items there. So if you'd like to just review those. Ex official student members report. Marissa.
Um, yeah, so I guess a few things going on in the high school right now. Student council is planning a spirit week. Um, so that'll most likely be, well, it will be. On the week of like St. Patrick's Day, which is a four-day week, it's kind of nice to get Friday off. And there'll be like a Falcon spirit, like where your Falcon apparel day and also. Saint Patrick's Day and like because of that red black each day gets each one, I guess. So that's coming up soon. Also, student council is also doing a like a little contest. For I guess it's in the high school, but anyone can do it really. We're like looking for like T-shirt designs that are kind of like quarantine themed. And kind of like COVID incorporate like a Falcon, anything like that. So in like the winner, their design will go. On a T-shirt that'll hopefully be able to be sold throughout the district. So that's pretty exciting. If anyone has any cool graphic design or artistic abilities. Are looking for that. And I think the winner gets a prize. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but. A prize would be nice. And then also, I guess for National Honor Society. Um, there's been a lot going on there. I were kind of like starting our big like elementary school, like high school, like. Kind of like get together project. So I know like a couple like high school students in NHS have been like. Starting to go down to elementary school rooms and like work with students in their classrooms. And that's been going really well and like seems to be really popular. And now I know like even more teachers are asking because they've heard that. It's been going really well, so they want to be a part of it too. And also on the whole like pen pal thing we're doing between. Elementary school students and the high schoolers. So they'll send notes back and forth, which is also cool. And then. I asked last, some senior year stuff, you know, like the officers have been like, obviously getting together and talking a lot, coming with ideas for the end of the year, but um. Yeah, I think Michelle Lannett is going to talk more about graduation later. So yeah, that's all I really have to say right now.
All right. Any questions for our student member? All right then, moving on to the president's report. I'm going to defer to the superintendent. I'll tell you and superintendent can. Can vouch for this. With the number of decisions for that affecting education in New York State in the past, what do you say about seventy-two hours? We have talked numerous times, usually shaking our heads of like, well, okay, what's, who decided this and why did it just change from like an hour ago? So I'm going to defer to Mr. Lallanis with that number of changes and new things that have come down to just listen to his report.
Well, thank you. Between you and then Marissa put me on the spot for graduation. Boy, this is great. So, Marissa, good job. You're learning from Steve. Good, good work. As far as graduation is concerned, let me talk just a minute about that. We put out a little pre-recorded video to all of our senior families. And we explained to them that we really were asking them to save two dates at this point, okay? About the nineteenth and the twenty-sixth, they're both Saturdays. Reason for that, we don't know if Regent's exams will be the expectation as of right now. If I had to. That I would say that they are, but there's still some work to be done. So if Regent's exams are in place, then we're looking at likely the twenty-sixth. Okay. As far as what that. What the ceremony and activities look like. We met last week Friday morning and started, started. Continued talking about what we may be able to do. As Mr. Sable pointed out, there were some. New. Numbers guidelines, I guess, that. Large group gatherings can now fall under in New York State, given the higher number if there's testing taking place. I want to see all that stuff come out in the executive order. As of right now, it was just through the governor's press conference. So once we see the details of that, we'll get a better feel for what we're able to, what we're able to do. What we know we won't be able to do is have a function at art park in their indoor theater. They do not expect to host any large, any indoor functions this year, so that that's off the table. And quite frankly, if we had to do something outdoors, we would probably, if we're able to, anything large, even if it's just our students coming together. We'd likely look at doing something on our. Nutr field, we could certainly do it there. So that, that's where we are with graduation. We have a very. Solid plan that worked and worked well last year. It doesn't mean that that's what we're going to do. We have, you know, our student leaders and our teacher leaders, they'll continue to work on what's best. And in the end. What we're going to do is we're going to put forward a plan that is. The best of what our students want, that is also safe and allowable in New York State at the time. Okay? So that's graduation. As far as just a couple other changes that have come out today. One, it was solidified that if you've had the vaccination. You can't, you no longer would have to quarantine as long as it's within a ninety-day window of the time that you had the vaccine. Also, the. Travel ban is, would no longer be in place for you if you've had the vaccine, again, as long as it's within that ninety-day window. So those are just some of the changes that have come out. You know, very recently. And there's. There's certainly, you know, I would expect more to come. What I would also like to comment on is this. And this is very difficult, I think, for. Individuals, because everybody lives in a particular place, to understand about New York State and New York State education right now. From district to district. The number of students who are actually in attendance on a given day is incredibly different. In our district, we've had almost since the beginning of the year, all of our elementary students who want to come and attend here every day. And our secondary have been there every other day. There are districts in New York State who are joining once a day via video, who are still. Learning through packets. So when. And I don't necessarily blame them, but when our leaders in the state. Talk about getting students back in school, there is such a wide. You know, chasm of from one end to the other of where, where kids are in their respective districts with regard to being able to. Return to school and whether or not they're in school. So I think that's really important for everybody to understand. Did I leave anything out from that list, either Marissa or Steve? Okay?
No, I think that's basically everything. Just to, you know, iterate the one point of, you know. Again, do not compare just neighboring districts with the way things are going. I know a lot of people are doing that if, you know, you hear. One district is doing like, for example, having a prom and. Why are we not having it? The odds are is that they're probably not having it, but you're hearing secondhand discussion from either students or parents there that don't know the whole story. And are going by what rumors are flying around there at a time.
Yeah, you know, that's good. You know, another good example of that is, you know, I just got them saying that our elementary, we were able to bring all of our kids back. Well, that's because we had the space in our buildings to do it. Some districts didn't have that opportunity. Right? You know, there was a plan that we wanted to put in place, but if we didn't have the space, it would have been a non-starter. If we couldn't have spread our students out and we were able to do that. So you know, I think it's just. Very difficult to try to analyze from afar what each district was able to do and not able to do. So just a few other points under superintendent comments here. One. We, at our March seventeenth meeting, I. Like to prepare a little presentation on the CDEP engagement activities and give you, give the board an update. If that's good with the board, certainly we'd like to give you an update on some of that. You know, I'd say neat things that are happening through that group. We are. Still planning some BOE recognition, Board of Education recognition. By this Friday, we're going to have a list together that then myself, John, Julie can get back together and talk a little bit about and do some more planning. As far as funding is concerned. You know, everybody keeps hearing about the federal stimulus funds, federal stimulus dollars. They broke down what each district was supposed to get in some additional funds, but I know that that came out. Here's what I want everybody to understand. Until as a district, we see otherwise. Our expectation as we move through this budget process is that every federal dollar that comes in is being taken back out. From the state funding amount. Because that's what the governors put forward in his proposal. So if there's three million dollars going in from the federal government, the, the New York State is backing three million dollars of their funds, their revenues. Out. And. In the end, we hope that that's not the case. We hope that they are, that the federal dollars are supplementing the dollars from New York State. And we're counting on our legislators to, to make that happen, to make that a reality. Certainly the expectation from the federal government is that the dollars that they were providing were to be on top of and to help. School districts, it was targeted to education. So we will see. I will say this. Thank you to Mr. Lee as our board representative and Mr. Sneed as a community representative. They, they joined me in a conversation with representatives from Senator Wart's office. They supported everything that we were talking about, asking for, and they felt the same way. I think that I felt very confident in that. And we just asked that they continue to advocate and really push for. And for increased dollars for our district specifically, because that was our opportunity to talk about that. And in the past, I will say that Senator Wart's office has been very responsive and very helpful in a number of matters concerning funding for our district. So we thank them and thank them for their time. And last but not least, it's on here every time I know, food service, I know it was talked about a little bit earlier. All students may still receive a free breakfast and lunch. That's whether or not you're in attendance or not, we have the grab and go live. So please come take advantage of that. It's in place through the remainder of the school year. If I could segue, I think up next is going to be reports to the board. And we only have one category there and that's finance. During, you know, financial crises during a crisis like COVID. There, there are many, many important things that happen. But without a proper budget in place and without someone managing that and making sure that we can. Expend appropriately on the things that we absolutely needed to do within a budget after a budget was set. All of the people who were talking earlier about all the things that we were able to do together would not have been able to happen. And the fact that, you know, I'll give you Allison and her department so much credit for the work that they do. With holding down expenditures, with making sure that the budget is, can support change during the year when we need it. The, you know, Allison and that entire department have just done an outstanding job. It made it so the rest of us, quite frankly, could do our job when we said, what's it going to take? So now Allison is up.
Thank you. I'm going to do a little review of reserves. Just so everybody can kind of see where we're at. I know I talked a little bit about it.
Let me interrupt you for a second. Mr. Coy, did you somehow turn the volume down? It seems like the last couple of speakers, even before Dan, the volume was down.
Um, that might be their individual computers. Within their mics.
Okay, okay then.
Can everybody hear me clearly?
Gotcha.
Okay. Okay.
So I'm going to do just a little review of reserves. And like I said before, I, I did touch upon it a little bit the last meeting, but I know we have a couple new board members too, and I just wanted to go into a little more detail about what we have and, and the status of them. So next slide. So currently, these are the board-approved reserves that the district has at the moment. We have a workers' compensation reserve, an ERS retirement reserve, a TRS retirement reserve, and an other employee benefits reserve, or ABLR. And each one of those is board-approved. Um, the workers' compensation, uh, would be used for workers' compensation expense. As a district, we are self-insured for workers' compensation. So any expenditures, um, could be put against or those reserve dollars could be used against those expenditures. The ERS retirement is for, uh, the non-teaching staff. It's ERS Employees Retirement System through New York State uh, versus TRS Retirement Reserve, which is for the teacher's retirement system. And then the other employee benefits or ABLR, you may hear it referred to, is, uh, those benefits that are received post-retirement. Um, in the two thousand, uh, after the two thousand nineteen, twenty audit, those were our, our balances on the first line. The next line is the twenty twenty-one, which is the current year we're in. That, those are the amounts that were appropriated to balance the budget this year. So those dollar amounts are there. And then if we were to utilize all of those appropriations, our remaining balance would be that bottom line in those reserves. Next slide. These are the capital reserves. So these are the current voter-approved reserves that the district has in place. We have a two thousand seventeen capital transportation reserve, a two thousand eighteen capital transportation reserve, and a two thousand nineteen capital improvements reserve. The two two thousand, uh, I'm sorry, the two capital transportation reserves are fully funded, so there's no more funding that can go into them. Um, those are the two reserves that I talked about earlier with Mr. Sirianni. Those can be used for any transportation, whether it's buses or district vehicles. Um, and capital improvements, uh, is for projects, capital projects. Um, two thousand nineteen, twenty balance, that, those were the audited financial balances. The two thousand twenty, twenty-one usage, now those are the amounts that we've, um, uh, talked about using this year. So eight hundred and ten thousand dollars was in the budget for new buses. And two hundred and fifty thousand was what the board approved at the last meeting, I believe, to use toward technology devices. That is a one-time thing where it does not have to be voted upon. The board can approve it. So we took advantage of that to, uh, help sustain what we have out there for technology devices for students and staff. And then, once utilized at the end of this year, the end, end balance would be the, the final line. And that's what we expect to have at the end of the year. Next slide. So for, uh, the additions for the next year, um, on the budget vote, these are the things, two reserves that we were talking about putting into budget vote. A new capital reserve for technology with a two million dollar maximum. Again, that would be used for all technology. It, it would be ten years to fully fund the reserve. Um, it's obviously not going to be funded right away, so we have up to ten years to fully fund and expense that reserve. When fully funded, we could provide approximately eight years with a current device replacement, which is what Mr. Hazel was talking about in his presentation. If you remember, he discussed a, a dollar amount of approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year simply to sustain what we currently have. And then the other reserve would be to open a new capital reserve for transportation with a three million dollar maximum amount. Again, we have ten years to fully fund that reserve. The current reserves are fully funded, so we don't have anywhere to increase unless we open a new reserve. Um, the balances in the current reserves will get us about two years of new buses. And again, these reserves can be used to fund new buses as well as replace maintenance vehicles. And lastly, I just want to talk a little bit about, uh, our appropriated fund balance. You know, the dollar amount in there is two million four thousand four hundred thirty-two dollars. That, again, is an amount that was appropriated to the current year budget to balance it, um, against the expenditures. Our unassigned fund balance, or, uh, what we always talk about being the four percent of the ensuing year's budget is at, uh, three million eighty-four thousand seven hundred eighty-five dollars. We're fully funded there. And then, um, a- again, I'm just going to note between the appropriated amount and the amounts that we, uh, appropriate to the budget in reserve use, three point eight million, over three point eight million was used to balance the current year budget. Now, if we don't use all that, if our expenditures come in under budget, if we receive additional revenues that we weren't expecting, we won't have to utilize those monies and we can put them back into the reserves and the fund balance and, and make it last longer, basically. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I have a question, Allison. On your first slide, just curious, um, why would the, um, the, um, ERS retirement be so much more than the TRS, than the teacher's retirement? Why would there be?
Because we just started that, if you remember.
Yeah.
We just opened up, remember, the TRS wasn't allowed, we weren't allowed to have that reserve until very recently. So we just started.
Okay, so we, we hope to continue to build it. That doesn't mean it's not underfunded.
That's correct.
Right. We just, we just opened it up and started funding itself. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you, Allison.
All right, any other questions? All righty then, moving on with agenda. Uh, any items for board discussion? Oh. Uh, any old business? Actually, item for board discussion. I do know we mentioned at the end of the last meeting about meeting live again. And when it's going to take place and what it's going to look like. Um, and I was going to refer tonight to, as to superintendent, his opinion based on the governor's comments, if you, and, and if you have discussed this with the other superintendents in the area of like what other districts are going to come back to, to having live meetings.
Yeah, I think there's certainly been talk. I think some are transitioning. I'm, I'm comfortable starting again in April. Um, you know, I think one of the big, um, for, first of all, a lot of people that had a chance maybe to be vaccinated, but also there's, um, with, with the social distancing, we, we keep social distancing in place, masks, I think we're able to certainly do this hand up. We'll, we'll have to probably, we'll have to set an amount for people to, you know, to join us in person, for sure. But I think if we do what we did prior to going, um, you know, fully remote with these meetings and, and allow people to, um, especially during budget season here, to, to write in, ask questions, that sort of thing. I think that, that can work.
Sure. So do we want to then start our April meeting as being back in person? For those of us that are comfortable with, I mean, if you're not, we can, you know, we can, you could still zoom in. We don't have to have all of us there.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, that works for me.
Should be fine.
Okay.
I'm good with it.
All right. Rick? No, I couldn't hear you there. Couldn't hear you there. Did you have an opinion like, uh, come back live in April or so?
You talking to me?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I said yes, I'm good with it.
Okay, I could hear you.
I'm talking to you all.
No, I could, I hear you there. I heard you that time.
Okay.
So, all right then, we will, uh, make the arrangements then to make the, the announcement for, um, with April's meeting will be live then. All right, um, any old business? Any new business?
I just have a question. Um, I had a parent ask me, um, with the upcoming April break, you know, people are feeling a lot more confident about going away, um, and traveling. Can you just go over what the actual, like, what it looks like if somebody does leave the state, like, for a vacation? What that looks like when they come back in terms of coming back to school? Um, I didn't want to give the wrong answer, so I said I would ask, um, and get the information.
Great question. And if, if, if this changes tomorrow, everybody can, you know, stamp date the time of this meeting, right? Um, so as of right now, and this is, we talked, we were talking about a little bit earlier. If, if you're someone who's vaccinated and you, and you fall within that ninety-day period, th- those individuals would be, would not have to quarantine when they return. Everyone else, and Mr. Stackel, correct me if I'm wrong. So this is, he's allowing me to say this right now and he's testing me, I'm sure. So when they come back, um, they, they have to, on their fourth day, they can get, they get tested. And, um, so they have to not, they, they wouldn't be able to return for three. On the fourth day that they're back, they would get tested. And then after that, um, once they're, it's a rapid test or whatever test they get, once the test result comes in, as long as they're, they're negative, then they can return.
So that goes.
Did I get that right?
There's, there's only one thing to add to that. Prior to leaving the state in which they were vacationing, they have to test there as well before they board a plane and come back.
Yeah.
They have to fill out the traveler form. And the only thing that I would just add to that, Mr. Lallana's did a really good job with that. The only thing I would add is, um, this is for domestic travel only.
So that goes for students as well. So students, if you're in Florida for a break, you're going to get tested in Florida. And then you're going to get tested again when you get home. What if you choose not to do those things? What is the timeline? How many days?
So quarantine period of ten days.
Ten days.
And really, it's eleven because there's a day zero, right? Correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. So I'll make sure to pass that on.
And to add for, uh, Mr. McKenna, that would also affect student athletes as well, coming back to teams for whatever season is in place.
Good point. Yeah.
Very good point.
Yeah. Correct.
So just to clarify, sorry, um, who, who are we showing these results to? Or who are they? Is that like a school nurse situation to return back? Yep, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
And I had to ask this. Are we, who is policing that and enforcing the consequences of not doing it?
So, you know, again, this is, uh, i- it's, it's an order, right? I mean, it's the law. So it would be, what would happen is this, here, here's how this would play out, I would imagine. Um, we would get a phone call. Did you know so-and-so was in this place? We'd have to do our due diligence to investigate it and to, to ask the questions. And if they sent somebody and sent them in to return, then that would be a matter for the health department, right? Um, and you know, if it was a staff member, because we've laid out what the expectations are for the guidelines, then they, you know, that wouldn't.
I'm saying more of the, you know, the, the student parent and.
Yeah, the families, I mean, you know. Could, you know, you're absolutely right. Listen, we're, we're, it, the, the, again, that's why I said the way I did. Reality is, it's probably going to come to us. Right? We're not, we're not checking kids' travel plans.
Are we allowing, um, the kids to zoom in for the time that they stay home, assuming they don't want to test? Or they, their, their school days fall within, you know, that waiting period of like getting tested once they get home? Are we allowing kids to zoom in for those days?
Great question. I don't have an answer. Great question.
Oh. Okay.
Let me. No, let, let, let me talk, because you're really talking about, the, the only places that that would be allowed, remember, it would be different because you couldn't even do that at the elementary level.
Right, right. So you're talking.
The question is, would, would, would we allow it for middle school, high school? Good question.
Okay.
I'll give an answer.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Um, I have a question just then, for, if you do talk to Mr. Stapleton, I know that we as a district are no longer reporting or ask our teachers for information about how many have been vaccinated and reporting it. But the county health, um, departments are supposed to be collecting that data from, I'm assuming when you sign up and register. Basically, it says what your profession is and to, um, if you hear what that percentage is for our district from Mr. Stapleton or from the county at least, can you, would you be able to share it with us?
Absolutely. If, if he, if he has that information and shares it, I'll share it with you, of course.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, um, any other new business? All right, if there's nothing else, I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. A discussion about that motion. If you guys want to talk more, you can. If not, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Poiser, Sting, motion carries. All right, we are.